Welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, January 23, 2018. We'll begin by calling this meeting to order and standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, and as always, we'll read the mission statement of the Wakefield Public Schools. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, we go to our public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will go straight into our Student Advisory Council. Hi, Kaya.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So, due to the snow on Wednesday, we had to extend our midterm exams into Monday morning and then proceeded with regular classes after that. The Winter Jazz Concert will be held tomorrow at the Galvin from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And we hosted the Academic Pride Night in the cafeteria at the high school last week, and this week we're hosting the Student and Parent Night this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 in the high school cafeteria.
Hi. So, report cards will be available on Tuesday afternoon on iPass. We will have a half-day on Wednesday, January 31st, for professional development, and lunch will be served. Jared Hurley and Jillian Russell were also named Student Athletes of the Month.
Anything for our Student Advisory Council tonight? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our Vice Chair, Mr. Markam, is ill tonight, so he's not here. He sends us well wishes and his regrets that he missed it, so I may just need some help on the motions tonight. I will move into our consent agenda and just ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2018, School Committee Meeting and accept the corrected minutes of the December 20th, 2017, School Committee Labor and Personnel Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Ms. Fordyce?
Just one correction. Amanda Westlake's name was spelled incorrectly in the minutes, so I just wanted to reflect the correct spelling.
Anything else? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so we do have some guests who are waiting to present before the School Committee tonight, so with the committee's indulgence, I think maybe we'll take them out of order and go straight into the first bit under Dr. Smith's portion.
Great. So, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Doug Lyons, and Walton Principal Elena Byrne, and Walton Teacher Kathy Christiano up to the microphones to share with us what's happening in the Wakefield Public Schools in regard to professional development and professional learning. As you know, this has been a real, an area that we've been working on very hard over the last few years, and we've made some really nice strides, so they're here to tell you all about it.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. Our presentation is going to be brief. I have about 10 slides in our presentation, and I've also asked Kathy Christiano and Elena Byrne to join us to talk a little bit about what action research has been like from their perspective. And so, just getting started, so the goal for this evening is to just share the mission statement and goals of professional development for the Wakefield Public Schools, to talk about the three areas that we have professional development. We have school-based professional development, which happens on professional days, and it also happens on the 15 Mondays where teachers meet throughout the year. Traditional faculty meetings do not look like they used to in the past. Often, these days are spent with an agenda to support the professional learning that's needed in the new curriculums and all of the work that the teachers are taking on. And so, the district-based PD happens in our five-part series. It also happens in our, excuse me, our professional days as well. And we also have job-embedded professional development, which I'll talk about when we get to that slide. So, the total number of teachers that participate, and parent educators that participate, and nurses and counselors that participate in our professional development program in the district, is a little over 400 adults. And so, throughout the course of the year, they participate in a little over 50 hours of PD. So, that's just to kind of give you a sense of what that work is like. One of the things that is a fundamental part, and has been a fundamental part for a few years now, in regard to our professional development, is we've tried to get active feedback after we've offered professional development, to hear from teachers and faculty in regard to what their thoughts are, and what they thought was effective, what they thought was less than effective, what met their mark in regards to their professional practice. We survey faculty throughout the year, and we surveyed the faculty in two groups. They're split in five, the 5 through 12 faculty, and the pre-K through 4 faculty. And so, we'll talk a little bit about that. I want to give some time to Elena and to Kathy to talk about kind of what, how action research has changed at their school, and how that's changed what they're doing during the five-part series. And there'll be time at the end for any questions that the committee may have. So, in regard to our mission statement, we believe in providing professional development that is responsive to the needs of, excuse me, to the needs of faculty, and students, and staff, in order to promote professional learning communities and professional development that will include clear goals. And this is an area where we've really made some nice gains in regard to our goal-setting. In the past, we used to set district goals, school improvement goals, educators would create separate Educated Growth Plan goals, and one of the areas of growth this year in particular has been kind of a through line in connecting all of these goal-setting areas to one another, so they don't seem separate. Was not our intent for them to be separate in the past, but I think teacher feedback has let us know that it has felt a little separate, so that's a change that we've made. We've also allowed for greater choice, and we've intentionally connected the professional development to the content that the teachers are teaching, and to the professional practice that people are participating in during the day. We want to provide greater communication between faculty, and staff, and administration. Our instructional leadership teams at the school levels has been instrumental in giving us feedback around what they really feel like they need more of. We also meet kind of the compliance and the regulatory requirements, the legal mandates, and the state requirements, so that this program, our professional development program, meets the high-quality PD standards that the state puts out as well. And so, so there's kind of three buckets that we offer professional development here in the district. We have school-based professional development, which again, I mentioned a moment ago, moment ago, happens on Monday afternoons. It also happens during early release days. We have 10 early-release days in the course of the year. Half of those days are school-based, the other half are district-based days. And so, the school-based goals in the professional development is connected directly to teaching, directly to teaching and learning. It's connected to new curriculum and to the WPS instructional strategy, which I'm sure you've seen. In terms of the job-embedded PD, so all of our teachers participate in professional learning communities, and we see that as a support that is a job-embedded kind of professional support during the course of their week. And so, we're pleased to be, to offer that. Those groups are facilitated and led by literacy coaches, our curriculum coordinators, and they're supported by the administration as well. And so, in the five-part series is our district-based professional development, which I think you've heard a lot about in the past. One of the changes this year compared to last year, last year, we wanted to give teachers an opportunity to get 15 professional development points, call them PDPs, for special education or for ESL instruction, and they need these PDPs to renew their licenses. That was one of our goals. But the feedback that we've gotten from some of our teachers was, well, you know, what if I don't need these professional development points? Could I create, or could I focus on another task? Or what if I wanted content-based PDPs? So, we started to think more broadly about how we could do this. And one of the greatest resources for feedback, there's a PD Task Force that's been in place for three years, or the three years I've been here. It might have been here the year before I got here too, as well, Kim. And so, the group last year was made up of Ashley Fasulo, Jennifer Pierce, Jenna Barbeau, Cheryl Walsh, Jane McConnell, Jen Galant, Adam Collantonio, and Lynn O'Neill. And so, this group, and Kathy Christiano was in the group last year, which is important to note, and you'll hear more about that in just a moment. But this group was really, I think, instrumental in helping us understand what needed to change. You know, so the structure in regard to our time is fixed, and the leadership, we had really great intentions and kind of goals for our PD, but in some areas, we weren't getting as much out of it as we could, and we kind of got a lot of clear, concise feedback from the PD Task Force, which was able to kind of say to us, for example, we offer an SEI class in district this year. The Sheltered English Immersion Class, which is a college-level course, which is 45 hours of instruction, and probably another 60 hours of coursework outside of the class, so we offer this course in district for our teachers, which we're pleased to be able to do because it used to be offered in a number of different kind of communities, and people would have to run out of school and rush to Saugus, or to Revere, or to Lawrence. So, now we offer this course in district. And Kathy, when she was on the PD Task Course, said, you know, 45 hours plus 60 hours of work outside of the class, you know, we're getting, the teachers are essentially doing 100 hours of work. Why couldn't we just allow them to take this class as part of the five-part series? They could get PDPs. They could get college credit if they so wish separately, but they also could work in cohorts during our district-based PD time to do their schoolwork. Right? So, the activities that they were doing outside of class, they now have a built-in cohort to complete that work. It was actually a brilliant idea. We've implemented it this year, and we've gotten some really nice feedback. So, this is just a graph from a Google form from the 5 through 12 faculty that is just a snapshot of some of the information that we get back to us. So, one of the questions that we ask is, is the professional development that we're offering in the first two sessions of this year, was it meaningful to your professional practice? And over 80% of the faculty strongly agree or agree that the PD has been meaningful. We have 89 respondents out of 200 faculty. It's about 45%. We're pleased with the number of respondents, and also pleased that they agree, and strongly agree by majority, that this has been productive. One of the things that I'm most excited about in the five-part series, last year compared to this year, last year, teachers essentially had five choices, or five things that they could choose in the district-based PD. And so, you'll see on the lower right-hand side of that slide, one of two, and the reason that it's one of two is because this year, there are 15 offerings that the 5 through 12 staff can choose from. And actually, within the 15, the first one, which is action research, last year, we had one action research cohort. This year, we have 33 action research cohorts, which is self-directed professional development, where teachers get together, create goals of, you know, content that they want to learn about, that can contribute to their professional practice, that will give them the exact PDPs that they need, instead of us planning it for them. And so, we're particularly pleased to make this change. So, there's, you'll see in the, I don't know if you can see the list here, but one of our classes is an online class for inclusive practices that's offered through the Department of Education. We're particularly pleased that we're able to offer an online class. I think you're going to see in the coming years, more professional development is going to move online, and teachers are even going to have greater choice to learn what they would like to learn to best help them become better teachers, better clinicians, and allow us to do better work for students. So, there's a comment section. I just included a few comments. You know, Jimmy Martin and Alan Drinkwater are doing a terrific job to bring, to bring forward social media and technology to help us in our teaching and learning. You know, we're super pleased that, so now, we also have teachers teaching teachers about things they know and are really expert with. You know, Jim Martin and Alan Drinkwater have been amazing in this area. I'll just cut down to one of the last comments on the screen, and it's kind of small. I apologize for that. But it says, you know, essentially, in 21 years, this has been kind of very helpful professional development that have met my needs. Just summarizing there, but some very positive comments. And so, before I get to questions, what I'd like to do, and this so far, this is a, these comments come from 5 through 12 faculty, and the reason why I asked Elena and Kathy to come is because they can provide an elementary perspective, and the reason there isn't data similar to the 5 through 12 group is because they've only gone through one session. After their second session, we'll have similar data. And so, I'd like to give an opportunity for them to speak.
So, I'll just kind of preface, and then it's really Kathy who's going to take over for this, because this was, the action research was proposed by her. So, the elementary schools adopted Lucy Cockens Reader's Workshop this year for full development in each school. So, our professional, school-based professional development was around Lucy's Cockens and helping teachers, you know, understand it. And part of that, we bought teachers some books to kind of, you know, help them supplement the professional development that we were planning in the building. And so, these books landed on teachers' desks in September, and so Kathy then came to me. And so, now, this is really where the action research place came in, and I'm a participant in this action research group, which has been lovely, and she is really the facilitator of this group, so.
So, I guess I am the facilitator.
Yes.
But I do want to start with, just to say that, you know, I've taught in Wakefield for a very long time, and over the course of the past five years, our PD has really evolved into a place that I feel as an educator here in town, that our needs are certainly being listened to, but we're also able to drive what we're learning. And all the elementary schools are a little bit different, so we all have different needs. And so, it's really hard, years ago, when we would have presenters come in, you know, to present to the elementary schools, but we would have different needs. And so, you'd sort of be sitting there saying, huh, okay, this isn't really what I need, I need right now. So, fast forward to where we are now, and just so excited that we have, you know, our action research project. I didn't do it last year, because I took the SEI course, and I also took one of the other courses, but this year, when these two books, you know, got dropped on my desk, which we do get a lot of great books every, every year, the hard part is, is that we teach for six hours, and we plan after school, and we have these great informational books, but when are we going to be able to really dig into them and go deeper into them? And so, when I got them, and knowing that we were doing Cockens, and knowing that I had done a lot of prep with Cockens for the, during the summer, and realized, whoa, there's a lot to this reading program, a lot of things that I don't understand, even though, that I've taught for 24 years, I still am a lifelong learner, and I had a lot still to learn. So, I went around literally individually to all of the teachers in my building, and said, do you want to do an action research project together, so that we can dig deeper into Cockens, and we can be the best teachers that we can be, but also meet the diverse needs of the students that we have in our classroom? We have such a wide range of students these days, very different, you know, than 20 years ago. We have a lot of things going on in our classrooms, and we have to meet the needs of all of those students. So, they all jumped on board, because we're all very much like-minded, the teachers that I, that I teach with, and they're like, great, let's do this. So, we came up with our question that we're trying to answer by the end of the school year, which is, how can I effectively incorporate small groups in conferences in a way that meets the needs of my students? And really, Cockens is all about strategy groups and one-to-one conferencing in table conferences, so that you are really basically individually meeting the needs of your, of your students in, in reading. So, we've only had one session, and it's one of the things I talked to Doug about, about next year, possibly not having the session, so spread out. He already said that's going to change, just because there is a little bit of a gap in between our sessions, and we sort of got going, and then we had, it was stalled a little bit. But we get together on our first session, and we had chapters in the book that we needed to, to read. We had to take notes on it, and we had to choose passages that really, you know, spoke to the challenges that we have and the successes that we have in our, in our classroom. And we went around and we debated, and we reflected upon what everyone had to, had to say, and we talked about the importance of getting into each other's classrooms and seeing what, you know, Stacy next door to me, or Amy next door to me, is doing in their classrooms, and what I can take away from that to meet the needs of my students. And that's really one of our big next steps for the next meeting that we have coming up. You know, we discuss, we problem-solve, we're going to be observing each other, as I just said, and obviously collecting data and analyzing it to see where the students are, and we, and where we end up getting them by the end of the school year. So, again, I know for myself as an educator, that to be driving what I'm doing in my classroom through really good research-based learning is a win-win for me, and it's a win-win really for the students and my colleagues. So, I'm just excited about the ARP.
And it just, it so aligns with what we're doing at the building base. So, beyond, it's taking what we had planned, and Lisa Azarito, our literacy coach, and I, what we had planned as, you know, our building-based staff, it just brings it even more to life. And so, we just dig deeper and deeper, and to have that teacher-driven is huge, because of that, you know, it's the ownership of them, and they are, you know, just to see the work in their classrooms, and to see what this PD has been doing, and getting into these books is amazing. The teaching is just phenomenal, so.
So, this is interesting, because what Kathy's not sharing is, in her action research group at Walton, so you can create a group of, you know, we've asked teachers to create groups of three or four, and if you want a larger group, that's fine as well. How many teachers at Walton are in the group?
There's eight of us, eight or nine, and then you have a nine.
I'm a participant.
I think you have a nine.
So, yeah, so we have our literacy coach, our reading specialist, we have six classroom teachers, and when she gave the idea to me, me being new to Wakefield this year, and, and you know, still kind of digging into Lucy Cockens myself, I said, wow, what a great opportunity to learn along with my staff. And so, I'm a participant, and so it's been, it's been really great. Yeah, so I think almost our entire staff is, is part of that group.
And if they're not, they're doing, the couple are doing their own.
Kathy's giving them permission to do something else.
Yeah, we left them here, exactly.
So, yeah, we're, so, you know, I think, I'm so proud of, of the group and what they've been able to create. And it's interesting, the more, the better this gets, there's no going back to sitting in a chair and listening to someone present in a way, like Kathy said, that might meet my needs, might not. You know, teachers that are doing this are creating, you know, their Educated Growth Plan goals are connected to this professional development.
There's a through line.
You know, there's a through line between their Educated Growth Plan goals, school improvement goals, and also our district improvement goals. Whereas in the past, again, it was not our intent, but now, they're kind of really coming in line with one another, and I think teachers feel really good about it.
I do.
Really proud of them.
We talk so much about personalizing students' experiences, so, I mean, when we talk about learning in a learning community, to be able for teachers to personalize their learning experience, so that it's meaningful, and we're bringing it to the classroom, and you can see it in all areas, and this really, this conferring in these reading strategies, personalize it for students, is just an amazing experience.
So, I don't know if anyone has any questions? I know you have a packed agenda.
Always have questions. What happens next year?
So, some of this will continue. So, you know, this year, we have one online learning class, and so, one of, there are a few things that I didn't highlight. You know, at the middle school level, we have, we're running a partnership program with Landmark, which is strengthening some of our special ed programs. We're doing a visualizing and verbalizing group, so some of the programs that we're doing.
Like Landmark and Beverly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, you know, we're really pleased to be bringing some really, really exciting things that are happening outside of our district into the district. So, I think our intent, Chris, the short answer is, you know, we'll continue to grow this, you know? And one of the fun parts about this, and fun parts about working for Kathy here is, you know, I, like I said, there's no going back, and I think, you know, it has kind of spurred a number of conversations and ideas about how can we be more innovative? You know, what, what could learning look like?
Is that, like, once you go through the end, it's like, will Cockens be done, or is that something you do over?
Well, I mean, I think about it as, there's always a, a problem that needs to be solved, and we always have issues that we have to solve. So, I look at it as, next year, there's going to be something else that I'm going to want to solve, to meet the needs of my, of my students. And so, since I'm an educator, I want to be able to research that and drive it, and have people around me, surrounding me, that also are giving their input and their expertise, and we can solve a lot of the issues that, that we have, but we just need the time to be able to do it. So, when you're given two and a half hours on that half-day, you have two and a half hours on that half-day to work towards solving that, that problem in a very analytical, reflective kind of, kind of way. So, it's, it's a win-win for us as educators, but it's, again, as I said before, it's mostly, it's a win-win for the, for the students and the parents, you know, that, and the parents.
And Lucy Cockens isn't going away.
Yeah.
This is our first year of adoption, so, I mean, this is something that's new to teachers, and there was a lot on their plate, and as she had said beautifully, you know, to do this and to do this well, it's, it's a lot of content, and she's asking Lucy Cockens in adopting this fully, there's a lot to it, there's, there's depth to it, that to do it well, you really need that time to understand it and read it and practice it, and be able to coach each other and give each other feedback on that, not just from me, but from each other. I mean, I think that's the most important piece here, is that, you know, doing those learning walks with each other and getting into each other's classrooms to be, give that peer feedback is huge. So, this isn't going away, but that being said, something new will come up, and something new will be a problem of practice that we'll be looking at. So, we have this opportunity to dig deeper, and if it connects with our staff, you know, with our building-based PD, even, you know, better.
And I also think, you know, in year one, teachers are learning about the program while they're also teaching it.
Yeah.
And year two, they're kind of figuring out maybe some of the things that they didn't know, but also with a new cohort of students, it presents a whole new kind of challenge in regard to teaching, because what you did in year one, you know, you might have to just refine a little bit, or think a little bit more about to best meet the needs of the next cohort of students sitting in the seats.
Well, I think as parents, we all realize that, you know, you, every, as the kids make their milestones, like, your problems don't go away, they just change.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Challenges change.
Challenges change.
Other questions?
Thanks, Rob. Thank you all for a great presentation, and it's so encouraging to see the progress that you're making. You know, I think about, you know, where the School Committee can have leverage, and, you know, it's obviously the budget, right? The budget development and the, and the resources that we can provide for you for professional development, but then, of course, then there's the contract and, and the time, and how we structure the school day as a, as a system. And so, you know, if you're thinking about taking this to the next level, both with resources and with time, which of course are both inherently limited, right? What would be the places where you think we could have more leverage to take, you know, to take professional development to the next level, you know, moving forward?
Well, years ago, when we had a half-day every Wednesday, I was one of those people that never wanted to get rid of it, because the amount of work that we did with Debbie Calora, when she was our principal at that time, was really incredible. And Doug knows, and Kim knows, we've talked so much about, about time, you know?
Yeah.
You have to somehow, somehow create it, and I always say, when I am a better teacher and have things planned out better to meet the needs of my student, then I have almost created time in my classroom, because I am that much more prepared in order to teach those students. So, I would love to have more half-days in order to give us some of that time, because we truly do become better, better teachers, because we are more knowledgeable on what we're doing with the, with the students, and the amount of curriculum, especially at the elementary level, that we're asked to teach to these, to these children, can never be taught in that 180 days. So, how do we make, how do we take that curriculum and really look at it, and almost like a scope and sequence, you know, old, old word to use it?
Yeah.
But so that we can really get through all of it for the year, but that takes a lot of work to, to do it, and maybe that's the next problem that, you know, that we, that we start to have, or the next problem, the question that, that we can make in order to, in order to solve it. But it is hard to create time.
Yeah.
We've had this discussion, and it sort of goes like this.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, and let me ask you too, sorry, just to pick up on one point and any of you can jump in here, but you know, in, in some ways that issue of that half-day, right? Because it seems like the trend is going toward, as you mentioned, is going more toward individualized learning opportunities in the same way that we're trying with our students. But then the half-day is a more sort of generalized approach. So is, is the half-day kind of a relic that we're trying to move off of? That needs to be more focused or?
I don't think it's a relic. And I think as new teachers join the district and as teachers have different needs, there are going to be um, you know, classes that we offer, for example, our SEI class um, or different courses, you know, our landmark class, our visualizing and verbalizing class.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the high school, for example, this year has an action research group in biology. So the biology department, the, the science department has a biology team working on the new curriculum that we brought in.
Right.
So we're, so we're gaining opportunities and time for professional development within the new curriculum that we've brought in, which we didn't have before. We would schedule a day and they would go and learn something else about something else.
Yeah.
Now we're kind of merging those two fields. And I, and I think Greg, to be honest, I think, you know, one of the things that I think we are going to look at, um, and we might even be the first district in the state maybe, um, to really think about what online learning could look like for PD, you know? Um, to say, you know, our goal is to, or I, we use the example of the SEI class that's happening outside of the normally scheduled time. Right? So we know that teachers are spending far in excess of the fifteen hours that are happening during the five-part series. Um, so it's not an issue of time because they're spending, you know, seven times that, six times that. Um, but now if, if we can think about courses or a series of courses that could be offered online and teachers could own their own time. Right? Think about that notion.
Right.
You know, I mean, we talk about this with Learn Anywhere, um, to, to give adults kind of the power over what and where they learn. You know, I think that that might be a place where we can really um, develop and be pretty innovative. Um, and I'm excited to figure that out, you know? Um, and like I said, as we do this, you know, staff, we're not asking less of staff. If anything, we're asking more and more. I think staff would be open to those types of partnerships or those types of opportunities. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
First of all, I, this was terrific. I love learning more about, um, you know, sort of the things that happen behind closed doors. And parents are always wondering, you know, what's going on, PD, you know?
Yeah.
Um, but I'm, I also work in a school and the fact that you're able to align what you're actually learning with what you're actually doing with your required student learning goals and professional practice goals. I mean, that's amazing because it's, it's hard to have that happen, just speaking from personal experience. What I'm wondering though is after you spend so much time and effort and become kind of like the experts, you know, in your content, how does that get shared, particularly in the elementary schools, with the other folks? So that they're getting that benefit and it's not just the lucky Walton people.
So I mean, as an administrator, with the other administrators, we all have kind of the same idea of what we need to. I mean, of course, we have to personalize to our building needs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you know, we are all adopting this together. We've sat down with our literacy coaches as a whole team. So from each building and with each administrator and kind of talked out our, at least our building-based professional development needs. And so this is something we're all kind of, you know, grappling with this year and how are we rolling this out? Um, so we really do try to communicate so that it is school, some schools, um, I know I'm partnering with Greenwood a little bit more this year. Um, I think one of the, you know, hardships is being a small school is I only have within a grade level two teachers. And so to kind of expand their knowledge and learning from each other, we've partnered with Greenwood to, to make even those grade levels a little bit more so they had more people to work with, which is great. I have first grade teachers going over to Greenwood to observe other teachers do their strategy group. So we're opening up those lines of communications and we have plans moving forward to bring all of the buildings together. Um, some of the things as administrators we've been doing with our, our coaches is getting feedback. We ask them to do an exit ticket after every professional development, um, PDs that we do. And so what we do is we take those and then we analyze them and then we offer with them, with even our, just our building days, with our half-days that we have or our half, or our hours on Mondays, is then we personalize it toward their needs too. So we take, what do you look after this professional development? What else do you need? What are you looking for? And so we create new cohorts. And sometimes you can blend those cohorts together with other buildings. Um, so this is something that is, we are trying to do district-wide. We are trying to stay on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's not just a Walton thing. Kathy just came up with this wonderful idea for her action research that connected all of it together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that being said, if you looked at the action research in other buildings, you can see those through lines as well. Um, and we are. So it is something that we're all kind of rolling out together.
Right, right. I mean, it, it's just, it's just so important to be able to share that. You know, I, I know at the school I work with, we have a, a capstone program for students. You know, and they're the seniors, they're doing their own research. Uh, and they become experts in answering the question that they, you know, decided they want to research. In the end.
Presentation.
They do a TED Talk.
Yeah, that's great.
You know, and it's, and it's, it's a really cool thing filmed, you know, and, and as you know, you've seen probably a billion of them. They have a particular format, but it's a really compelling um, and easily digestible way of, of getting some really great information.
That's a wonderful idea. There are definitely different ways that we could use, you know, technology, as Doug was saying, and other ways to kind of share our learning with other places, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I also think one of the things that we are starting, starting to do, it's a little bit of a, you know, we have to get comfortable with it, is I can see in the next five years, um, that'll look a little bit different, but going into the other classrooms. So you know, we're starting to do that at the Walton, but there's also three other elementary schools and there's phenomenal teachers at those elementary schools. But I feel like we're just not there yet at, as a whole group of elementary um, schools to say, you know, we're going to go over to the Dahlberg to go see this program and this program. We just haven't done enough of that. Um, but I, I feel like when, when we do more and more of these action research projects and people start to hear what's happening, they're going to want to get over to the other schools and say, I really need to take a look, a look at that. It is, teachers are funny about stuff like that. You know, we are great in front of the kids and then other adults walk in and we're like, oh my God, there's, there's big people in here. What are we supposed to do? So we have to get over that so that we can teach, you know, the, our colleagues really what we, what we do know.
And as a teacher, I know, it was never scary for me to have an administrator come in, but to have my peer come in is, is a totally different, is a different thing. So I mean, you're, as teachers, you're used to your administrator coming in or your superintendent or assistant superintendent. To have your actual peer come in and give you that feedback is, it's a little scary. And so we kind of put ourselves in silos. Um, and so something that we're starting, just to like work with a little bit this year, um, that we're rolling out is something that we call learning walks, where it's a cohort of teachers across grade levels where we're going into each other's and a very non-evaluative, um, not a lot of pressure. We're looking at a high-leverage practice, which is meeting the diverse needs of, uh, diverse needs of students. And so it's not evaluative to a teacher, but it's really looking at student work. Um, and so it's getting people a little bit more comfortable to kind of do that. And they're sharing their feedback with each other. I'm not, I'm just facilitating the beginning of it and then I step, I take out. So it really is just teacher-led. Um, I know that I've talked to some other principals about starting some of those practices, which I think is getting people to feel like our walls are breaking down inch by inch. So feel like Kathy said, like hopefully in five years, those walls will be broken down and we will feel comfortable.
That really is the next step.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would, I would suggest that you put it as the next step. You know what I mean? Because I think as we, you know, as we work, as we work with budgets
Yeah.
and people are wondering, where can we get the biggest bang for our buck?
Absolutely, yeah.
I just see this as, as really one of those fundamental pieces and it's easy to advocate for.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you for the feedback.
I have two quick questions, more general. Um, first, are we still leveraging our relationship with Leslie University for support with PD? And second, um, you showed the slide that said eighty-eight, I think it was eighty-eight percent agree that the PD was helpful.
Yeah.
Is there a specific follow-up with those who don't agree, since we're talking about how there's not time for all of this? Just to follow up so we don't continue to have people in PD that it's not helpful for.
And so every, everyone has agreed. So everyone is in the agree category. No one disagrees.
Okay, that's great.
And so even the eighteen percent that, so they.
They just don't strongly agree?
They don't strongly agree. And so, um, so everyone is in the agree category. So of the five choices, there's no one in the bottom two categories. Which actually, Kate, is a first for us.
Awesome.
Um, so um, we're kind of, I feel like that's a telltale.
Yeah.
You know?
It definitely is.
But i- i- in the event, um, and you know, teachers are not shy and you know, you're seeing tonight, right? And so they, they, I think are able and kind of the relationships are developing in a way that teaches are finding ways um, to get us the information that we need to kind of make this space better and more effective.
That's great.
Yeah. So another question?
The other piece was about Leslie, are we partnering with them anymore?
Working in partnership with Leslie. Um, we're still a satellite campus for them. Um, and so this year we're not working, um, in our partnership with Play-Based Learning. We collected some feedback from the kindergarten teachers and they felt like, you know, they've done it for a couple of years. So they really feel like the centers that they're developing are working well. Um, they have said they would like more time together. Um, and we haven't created that yet, but we are still working with Leslie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I said, uh, a couple of quick observations. The, um, you talked about comfort level going into the other teachers' classes and stuff. Would filming a presentation be worse?
To begin with, I, I, I can't, Kathy would have to talk to this. I would say, am I, I, I think that's a little scary sometimes. Um, maybe not filming the teacher, filming just students and looking at the student work would be a little bit less, like less scary.
Might be, I thought it might be easier to share and reshare again.
You speak, I mean, you speak to that, so.
So, so we have done some filming. Um, so we have done some filming in regard to sharing a practice. Um, for, for the last couple of years, we've had literacy coaches go in and work with teachers and conference with them. And we've filmed their, their conferences with teachers and we've shared that in professional development. Um, but on scale, you know, we're talking, you know, the numbers are four or five, not thirty-five. You know, um, and I think that, you know, one of the things that I'm learning is that, you know, when, when teachers are excited, when teachers are seeing something that they think can meet the needs of their students and they're excited about it, all bets are off. I think that they're willing to share it, teachers are willing to travel for it, they're willing to kind of spend time and do whatever they need to do to kind of figure that out and learn more about it. Um, and I think it's going to come and it's going to come quickly. You know, I think similarly, like I said, last year, I was so excited to roll out action research. I thought it would be a no-brainer. Everyone is going to sign up for it. Two groups. I did, I thought, oh my gosh, did they not hear me? You know? Um, and, and this year, we have thirty-three, you know? Um, and, and like I said, I think once teachers get in this space and they're directing their own time and their, their own agenda, um, you know, this is not soft work. And, and the more that it connects to the work that they need to do, uh, I think that there, there's, there, like I said, there's no going back. You know, and the more we share this, even outside of Wakefield, we have, we have some colleagues that have said, you know, how do you do that? How do, you know, because we're interested in doing that as well. And so that's another kind of telltale or feedback for us to make us think that we're going in the right direction. But I, to answer your question, I think it's going to come.
I think it will definitely come, absolutely.
But.
And then the only other, uh, kind of shift, um, a couple of years ago, when you had those, those five-part things, or I think they were five parts, right?
Yeah.
Uh, there was a lot of concern that like if you picked the track and then decided you didn't like it, you were stuck.
Yeah.
Has that changed?
Uh, yes, yes. And so not many, not as many people are changing. You know, a lot of people in the, in the first one kind of put a toe in the water and thought up, I want, I want to change. Um, no, I think, so we, so we've had people change, ask if they can change. You know, I've started in an action research group and I want to jump in to the SEI class. Well, if we have space in the SEI class, of course. So we're not looking to have an adult be where it's not most productive for them. So it's not, it's, it's really remarkable, remarkably less parochial. Um, and we want to get people in spaces where they can learn. So yes, there's no kind of, you're tied to it.
I know that was a big concern when we started down that path.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to finish up here. Okay, so the next piece is, I have a very preliminary draft of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen calendar. Uh, there was one in your packet, but the one I handed out tonight just fixed and corrected a few mistakes and added a little bit more information. Um, like I say, it's still in the preliminary, preliminary stage. The reason I bring it to you tonight is I'm starting the process of gathering feedback. So I thought I'd start by issuing it to the school committee so you can look at it, digest it over the next couple of weeks and start, um, you know, we won't vote on this for another, probably another month or so. Um, I do want to get out to educators, educator teams, parents, PTO leaders, school councils, let everybody take a look and weigh in. Um, I did add, um, on the draft I gave you tonight, preliminary conference dates. I think one improvement for this year, I'd really like to come out of the gate with all of those nailed down, the back-to-school nights, the evening conferences, so people can get them in the calendar and not leave anyone wondering. We also, uh, there's been some conversation about whether or not we should close school for religious, religious observances. Um, and this, some of the conversation came up in a, you know, a community forum at the Galvin, um, right before vacation. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that up for people's thought, thoughts. I've received a couple of emails. And basically, uh, you know, to, to this point, um, we have not, we have had school on the Jewish High Holidays. Uh, one of the things that we did add last year, which people were very appreciative of across the community, was in the school committee-approved calendar, uh, we noted that on the Jewish High Holidays, uh, that no events should be scheduled, no student assessments, uh, and so forth, so that we'll make sure we're really, um, you know, really respectfully looking at those times in the calendar. But some of the conversation has been around, you know, should we or should we not have school on those days? Something for people just to be thinking about and considering. Um, and then this, next year, Good Friday actually occurs during the April Vacation Week. Uh, but I would say that that's another day to look at, you know, are we looking at religious observances or are we not? And, um, it really across the board. Um, so I think those are things that for our community, we should just consider and talk about. And, uh, you know, for some future conversation. But like I say, this is really just to kind of take a quick look at, you know, what the proposed starting would, date would be, proposed end date, when the conference days would be, where the vacations fall and that kind of thing. So I hope this is informative and people can maybe digest it and we can have conversation at some point.
I just have one brief point to pick up on what you had said, Dr. Smith, um, about, you know, religious holidays. Um, I think that for everybody, you know, at home or in the public, come to your school committee members to talk about that. I think one of the benefits of local education is that we have the authority to make those decisions based on what is best for our community. Um, so I would just encourage folks to come to your school committee members with your opinions on that because I would be very curious to hear them. I think, I think most of us would be.
Thank you. All right, so revisions to come. Um, and then I think, uh, let's see, oh, and then the Wakefield Independence Day Committee reached out to me with their annual carnival request and there is a motion on that.
So let's see, is there a motion to approve the WIDC twenty eighteen carnival request as presented?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Did anything on that?
And then just one piece of clarification. Mr. Callanan had asked if the dates and times were any different than last year and they are not. It's pretty much the beginning and end date would be the same as they have been in the past.
And did the Board of Select and proof is last night?
Last night, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion's are made in second. It all in favor? And we hope it does not rain.
Exactly. And then under my other, I just wanted to share some great news that I got from Tom Banker today in regard to the All-State Music Festival. So last Saturday with the state auditions and Wakefield High School had eight students selected to participate in the All-State Music Festival in Boston uh, from March one through three. And in that experience, uh, they get to perform at Symphony Hall, which is really exciting. Um, after two sets of auditions and over five thousand students from around Massachusetts auditioning for festivals, uh, the eight students from Wakefield is the most from Wakefield in over fifteen years, which is really exciting. So congratulations to Gavin Frye, Erin McCormick, Elizabeth Nordine, Samantha Prosperi, Max South, Ava Spies, Ryan Tarpe, and Catherine Tanias. Congratulations. It's really exceptional.
Excellent. So just a thought, Kim, because I know when we were walking.
So, uh, just a thought, Kim, 'cause I know when we were walking over here, you had, um, let me know that Tom might be coming to do a presentation on the arts curriculum. Uh, could we potentially ask some of those students to come and talk about their experiences in conjunction with that? That might be fun.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a suggestion.
Thank you very much. And that's it for me. Chair?
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we'll jump back up, um, to the superintendent search process, a very light topic for tonight. Um, so you'll recall the memo and the job description that were distributed at the last meeting, uh, we thought it best, the folks who are here, to, um, take a few weeks to look those over, digest them, uh, form our opinions. So my thinking for how we ought to proceed tonight is, um, we can first begin with a discussion, um, with respect to which of the three options, if any, laid in that memo. Um, it, it would be the preference of this committee to go about, and then afterwards, the Labor Subcommittee, like I said, that job description is ready for approval. Uh, and then we can talk about specifically whether we have any, should we go with option number two? Whether we have any amendments that would like to be made, um, for the screening committee or things of that nature. So as, as Chairman of Labor Markham said last meeting, it is our recommendation as the Labor Subcommittee that we do go with option number two, which just as a reminder, is a, um, is a, essentially a school committee-led search, um, one that doesn't require us to spend tens of thousands of dollars on a, um, national consultant or an international consultant. Um, and it is also not the option, um, and that we used in Dr. Smith's appointment, which was essentially when the school committee just, um, is appointed directly after Dr.'s right left. So with that, I'll just open up the floor for discussion if there's any other, um, opinions, if there are any, any thoughts on that, anything at all.
I, I agree with option two.
Okay.
I think it makes the most sense.
Sure, thanks, Rob. So thank you again, um, and the committee for giving us a couple more weeks to digest this, and I, I agree, I think it's, I think it's the right approach. Um, this document that we just got tonight, this is, um, just a, like a clarification, further elaboration of the, of the makeup of the committee?
So that, yep, so that, that document is going to be, uh, this is a new document for the screening committee that's contained within option two.
Right, right.
Based on recommendations that were presented to the Chair of Labor Subcommittee, to myself. Um, and that'll all be up for discussion. It sounds like we will proceed with option number two, but, you know, that'll be contained within the actual memo itself.
Okay, so my only question suggestion, open it up for conversation, I thought the, um, two additional key stakeholder, uh, groups, if you will, um, in this process that we might consider, um, adding representatives from would be the Finance Committee and, and/or the Board of Selectmen. Um, you know, uh, you know, depending on, you know, uh, there's obviously a, um, a threshold which you want to make the committee coherent enough that it doesn't get too unwieldy, and I realize we already have a lot of people, um, but I just think there may be some, um, good advantages to having someone from those two, you know, sort of, uh, authorizing, um, boards that we work with closely and, and whose support for public education is so critical to our success. So I'd just throw that out there for consideration.
So part of, um, part of, well, maybe it might be best then, based on that, Mr. Leopold, if I just take you through, um, what recommendations we heard that are different from the document we got two weeks ago.
Sure, okay.
Versus what we just put before you tonight.
All right.
Um, so the first one does not change that Tom Markham would be the, as the Chair of Labor, he would serve as the, uh, Chair of the Screening Committee. Um, number two does change, there's a change for that. It was a request from WEA, Unit A, um, that instead of one representative appointed by the President, um, their request is actually that we add two additional for a total of three. Um, the Labor Subcommittee having met, um, thought that one, adding one additional one for several reasons that I'll get to later, um, was a worthy compromise, so we went ahead and put that there.
Okay.
Um, third, on this, and this is all in this new document, uh, is a completely new lo- new line that was based on a request from Unit B, which has to have representation, and the Subcommittee thought that that was fair.
And just, just, uh, for clarification's sake, Unit B's principals?
Assistant principals.
Assistant principals.
And directors.
Sorry, yes, right, right.
And guidance.
And the guidance.
Yeah, director, the guidance director and director of visual performing arts and health and wellness and athletics.
Right, thank you.
Um, five is just a, um, a linguistic thing, it's just that the representative of the elementary school principals is to be selected by themselves, by the elementary school principals. Um, now, it changes afterward. One thing that, um, we spoke about in the Labor Subcommittee is that we wanted a more equitable representation of parental involvement on the, um, on the screening committee, so to that end, we added an elementary school parent rep selected by the elementary school PTOs, a middle school parent rep selected by the middle school PTO, and a high school parent representative to be selected by either the PTSA, and that should be crossed out, that was just my error on the typing, PTSA or high school principal. And the reason we left it at that, and Dr. Smith, I may ask you to jump in just to kind of clarify the difference there, uh, is, is from how it's been, um, iterated, is the PTSA is kind of something that is, focuses a great deal on senior events and then things of that like.
That's correct, yeah.
Whereas, um, so if there, if there's not as robust PTO as perhaps may exist at the lower level, at the lower levels, we wanted to make sure that there's still an appointment option for, for a strong parent representative, so we just included that that may also come from the high school principal, uh, should that be the case. Eleven and twelve are also new. Um, the Wakefield Educational Foundation requested, um, representation on the screening committee. Uh, and as such a strong ally of, of the Wakefield Public Schools, we thought that that was warranted. Likewise, with, um, with CPAC, the Wakefield Special Education Parent Advisory Council, um, who also requested, um, positions there. Um, in the interest of, you know, full disclosure, there were other rec- or other requests that we weren't able to accommodate or that the Labor Subcommittee did not accommodate on this particular list, but are certainly up for discussion tonight. One of them was an additional representative from the town.
Okay.
Um, to be, so it would essentially be, the last one, fourteen, would be two representatives of town government. Um, and I believe I had mentioned the first one about, um...
I don't understand the way fourteen is worded.
One representative of town government selected by the town administrator, the representative may, it should say may be the town administrator. In other words, Mr. Mayo could appoint himself.
Okay, but that was just a word mispronounced.
No, no, my apologies.
Yeah, so, right, that, that, if you, if you don't mind, Rob, that's just, that's actually, 'cause they're, in a way, they're two different things, potentially two different sort of subsets of, um, participation. So one could be, um, a, a town official, like a, you know, a staff person from the town, whereas the Finance Committee and the, and the Board of Selectmen are, you know, they're volunteer boards like us. I guess, is, is that, um, or, or is fourteen meant to be one or the other, or?
So, so we had that discussion in Labor Subcommittee. Um, that's, I think essentially that's what, um, that's where it would, that's what, how it would manifest if there were two from the town.
Okay.
Um, and we could certainly make it that there'd be one from the Finance Committee expressly and one from the town. Um, the, the reason that we ended up keeping with one representative at town government was actually to make room for a representative from CPAC.
I see.
Um, we felt that, um, that, uh, that community piece, uh, was very important, especially given all of the advances and continued advances in special education that we've been making in Wakefield. That was just a decision that the Labor Subcommittee made upon recommendation, like anything else on here. Um, it, it can be up for discussion. Um, and secondly, the, the last piece is just, we tried to keep it, it's right now at fifteen people.
Yeah.
It, it started at nine, we thought, additional community representation to kind of balance between, you know, district employees and community representation was worthy of adding a few more people to it. We did, we did take great care not to try to break fifteen, because of course, if we do break fifteen and we add sixteen, we either remove or we add another one to keep that odd number. Um, so that was just our thinking behind that.
Okay.
I'd say also, our thinking with the fifteen, we, we're working on a really tight timeline, and this group is tasked with quite a few deliverables in that point in time, and for scheduling purposes, we felt if it got over fifteen, it might be really difficult to, um, meet those dates.
It's already going to be hard enough with fifteen, yeah. Got it, thanks.
One observation, and you'd never know till you ask, is that there's a, there's clearly a, a, a strong possibility, given our timeframe that we're working with, that the FinCon people are too busy, 'cause this is budget season for them. This is when they meet the most and they may not have the time.
Core work, yeah, yeah, yeah. And just, I, I didn't feel real strongly about it, I just wanted to raise it, yeah, but I hea- I hear, I hear your concerns. Thank you.
One of the things that I'd like is the distribution between sort of parent, town, community, and like direct reports, you know, the people who are actually working for the superintendent. It's actually seven and seven, and then the chair. So, I don't know if you intended it to be that way?
Show her a chart.
Yeah.
We need a chart.
Yeah, I, I, that, that I really, I think, is very important. There's not, uh, uh, it's not skewed into one, one way or the other.
Yeah, and I think that was precisely our thinking.
Yep.
In creating it this way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else on the screening committee, as outlined, as presented in the document, any amendments, any motions, anything of that nature?
You want a motion to accept it?
I think we, I think we should do a motion to accept the, uh, Labor, is there a motion to accept the screening committee as outlined by the Labor Subcommittee in the document distributed tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion, anything, questions? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, um, the other portion that, um, we do need to do is the job description that was distributed, so that has actually not changed since the last meeting, um, unless it changes tonight. Um, so I'll just, uh, like I did last time, I'll just open it up for any discussion surrounding the job description. Yeah, Ms. Fordy, please.
Um, I wanted to add, um, language that would, I think, further support our, uh, commitment to promote diversity. I mean, I think that that's a, that's a good start, but, um, I'm sort of looking around and, uh, I came across another, um, phrase that I'd like to put forth and see what you folks think. Um, so I don't know if I need to say this in terms of moving to amend, or is that what I should say?
Yeah, I think it is, yes.
Okay. So I move to amend a commitment to promote diversity, I move to amend the job description, specifically removing a commitment to promote diversity and replacing it with proven ability to understand and empathize with the learning experience and community experience of those from, a diversity of cultures, races, backgrounds.
Okay.
Um, or something in that order, you know, we could, we could tighten it up or, or use, um, some different language, but... The, the reason for it is, um, I wanted to see this idea less as like a, like a little checkbox where, you know, yep, so many years budget planning, so many years in leadership, and instead have this be more of a, uh, a mindset, um, that might supersede and might inform the individual's decision-making with respect to all of their other obligations.
Any discussion around that? Mr. Leopold?
Uh, sure, thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to Ann for, for that. I, I like the language. The other, um, approach we might take, and we've, I've been using this in, in the agency for which I work, um, is using the, the phrase, uh, or the terms, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Each of them are, they're related, obviously, but they're distinct, um, and, um, they cover, um, a lot. Um, and so we might consider, um, some combination of that, that phrase, 'cause, you know, equity and inclusion go beyond diversity in important ways. Obviously, inclusion is a central, um, uh, element of our instructional strategy, right? Um, but it, you know, it transcends just instruction. So I wonder if there's a way to include that language in addition to or complimenting that that you've proposed tonight, so, a little bit of wordsmithing here, but I think we might be able to get some, get to something that is really, it really delivers a strong message.
Right, right. I, I fully support, uh, including that language, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's, it sounds like there's definitely an appetite for doing that, uh, for this particular bullet point, so if we can just, um, nail down the language, then we can, um, go ahead and, uh, move to amend the job description and then move to approve it.
Okay.
We can probably do that, we could probably do that now, if we needed to.
We want to do it now.
We would have to do it now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, okay. Um, so, proven ability to understand, instead, you know, understand diverse, well, this part, this is, this takes me a few minutes.
Demonstrated ability, maybe?
Mm-hmm. I'm just trying to, I, I like diversity, equity, and inclusion in it, I just want to make sure it's, um...
Yeah, you could, yeah, yeah, you could actually start with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then, um, and then add that sentence, uh, Ann's new sentence as a sort of further articulation of that.
Mm-hmm.
That might be one way to do it. Could that work?
I kind of like the word demonstrated more than proven.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, demonstrated ability, yeah, that's a little bit more of an action verb.
So this will be on the line, so it's currently a demonstrated ability, and Judy, we'll just need to make sure that we get this down so we can ultimately amend it.
So, demonstrated ability to understand...
I think you also said empathize as well in the first line?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it was, uh, to understand and empathize, I'm not married to that particular word, but I, I'd like to kind of, how it was framing. Um, it's sort of understanding the learning experiences of those people, of, of, of people who come from a diversity. We're all, you know, a diverse group of people, so having that understanding, so I'm, I'm trying to incorporate this phrase.
A demonstrated ability to empathize and understand with people of diverse learning experiences and to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion?
To promote diversity, I love it.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
That works.
All right, so then we'll just go ahead, and is there a motion to remove a commitment to promote diversity and substitute it with a demonstrated ability to understand and empathize with people of diverse learning experiences and to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Great, so we've got an amended job description, we'll just ask for a motion to approve the job description before the school committee as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion, questions? All in favor? Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The last bit that we have under, um...
Just for clarity, is this description what's going to be posted on, like, school spring?
Right, yeah.
So I'll need that for tomorrow?
Yeah, so we'll get that to Dr. Smith tonight, so she can, it's actually, that's part of our next motion is to approve kind of the timeline and everything here, and the timeline calls for the job vacancy announcement to be posted tomorrow, which will essentially be that job description and the timeline, uh, contained here.
So we really did have to do it tonight?
The only other, uh, piece here, uh, that we need to determine is the actual number of applicants that the school committee wishes the screening committee provide to them after their, um, after their process, and the Labor Subcommittee came with the recommendation of three. Um, that seems to be typical, if there's anything more or less that we would want, we could certainly decide that now.
Just for, I, I don't want to tie someone's hands. I, I think three's a good number, but if they got to a point where they were, you know, they had one and two, and then like, candidates three and four were tied, I mean, I don't want to hold them back, I would, at that point, I would like them to send forth all four. So, you know...
Can we put a recommendation of three?
Or even a maximum, or however, however we'd like to do it.
A recommendation of three, but not how vast to that number.
Okay. Give them some flexibility, yeah.
Because I remember being on those committees in the past, and it's, there are times when you just can't quite get beyond the last two candidates.
And that's a good point, because if there is a candidate like that, we'd rather have the ability to make that decision ourselves.
Yeah.
As the person who ultimately hires, the group who ultimately hires. Okay, so this one's a quick fix. We're just going to change under number six, it's right next to March 20th, School Committee. So I'm going to ask for a motion to amend that line to say, School Committee to publicly receive a recommendation of three names and qualifications of the finalists from the Screening Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? All in favor? Great. Okay, so that's a lot of the legwork that we needed to get done as a committee in order to...
So can we actually vote on going with option two?
You're right, I did forget that motion.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. So that one, that, okay. Is there a motion that the School Committee endorsed the Labor Relations Subcommittee recommendation for the superintendent search process to fill the vacancy due to the retirement of Dr. Kim Smith, as outlined and amended in the memo dated January 9th, 2018, numbered steps one through six?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Great. Now that is the legwork that we needed to do, to get this posted and start the process of hiring our next superintendent.
Can I just ask a question? I know when we've had searches for principals, we, you know, we don't have students on the committee, but we do involve students, give them a tour of the building and take them here and there. Do we do that with the superintendent search, or is there, I'm not even sure it's completely necessary, but...
Finalists.
The finalists will have a chance to interact with students, most likely.
So the memo that we approved does call for the Screening Committee to hold at least one parent and community forum. Obviously, any member of the community is welcome to go to that. Once the finalists are referred to us, the School Committee would be free to do really whatever, however we wanted to.
However we want to.
In the past, what we've done is we've had all the finalists come out on the day of their interview and tour the district.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So that gave, and it gave them a chance to meet with different parent groups around, during that day, so, you know, the poor candidate ends up probably going through six interviews in one day.
Well, I just wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for the students, should they be interested to actually get to meet them. I mean, I think Kaia would be, you know, we would really want her to be able to, to share some feedback on the finalists.
Assuming she's not going to be a candidate.
That's right.
Exactly.
Anything else on the, on the search process? Great, okay. Mr. Pfeffler, this floor is yours.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two gifts this evening. The first gift is from Leaders and Environmental Lawn Care and Plant Company for $75. This seems to be an annual gift from them, and very appreciative.
Okay, is there a motion to accept with gratitude?
Yes. Move that the School Committee accept with gratitude the donation of $75 from Leaders and Environmental, Inc., Lawn Care and Plant Company for the School Department to use as it deems appropriate.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
And the second gift this evening is from the MGLD Delory Children's Revocable Trust for the Wakefield High School, Wakefield Memorial High School Gymnastics Program in the amount of $1,000.
Move that the School Committee accept with gratitude $1,000 donation from the MGLD Delory Children's Revoc Trust for the Wakefield Memorial High School Gymnastics Program.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion, questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffler. Subcommittee reports, finance and facilities, Mr. Callenin.
Finance has met twice since our last meeting. I was unable to attend the first meeting, and I think Greg had a death in the family that day, so that meeting didn't officially happen because we did not have quorum.
Okay, Joe.
Yes.
Kate was there. Kate was there. I was unfortunately delayed, and it was...
And I was not notified.
The night before, immigration services held me up and I wasn't able to get back in the country.
I didn't pay them enough.
I was coming back, not going out. But then we did meet again last Friday, and the minutes have been provided to you on this, not in the packet, they came to you yesterday, the day before. Does anybody have a problem with accepting those minutes tonight? From the January 19th meeting?
I certainly don't, I have reviewed them.
So I'd like to make a motion that the Committee accept the minutes of the January 19th meeting of the Finance and Facilities Committee.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
And basically, what we talked about was the actions that the administration has been taking on the current year budget to try to save as much money in every line item that we can because of the high number of unexpected costs we had with special ed this, this year. We do need to be working on a request for town meeting, so we have started to formulate that request. We will bring it forward at a future school committee meeting for approval. We're hoping we can get that, that number down into that, you know, $175,000 range for a town meeting request, which is fantastic work on the part of the administration, considering the original number was $675,000. Walton School is, finally, they were able to start construction this past weekend. The administration's moved into the trailer, and the wall should have gone up Saturday, I haven't been over there to check that I actually did, but...
Yeah, it's up.
And they should have started demolition of the cafeteria gymnasium area. And waiting to hear from Capitol, and then next year's process is in place, you know, the numbers aren't finalized, we should be bringing that to you in February. And we have another meeting scheduled for this Friday to hear more input from the Finance Committee. We have been trying to work very, very closely with them this year. We've had them to three or four of our meetings so far, in an effort to avoid any misunderstandings going into April, in presenting our budget to them this year.
Great.
Has that meeting been posted for Friday?
Do I actually have that up?
I don't think so, no, yeah.
So we should do that promptly?
Yeah, yeah. Labor and personnel, obviously, we hope Mr. Markham feels much better. You see what the Labor Subcommittee has been up to. With that, we will go into policy and planning, Ms. Fortier.
So Dr. Smith had asked if the Policy Committee could think about what to do with the interest that accrued, that has been accruing from student activity, the student activity accounts. And actually, kind of incidentally, I had been reading an article about a school district that got in trouble with their student activity accounts. I don't think it was specifically about the interest, but I really appreciated, you know, your foresight to kind of button down all of these things. So in any event, the policy, or the draft policy is listed in your packet, and I am going to read the motion. Move that the School Committee lay on the table for consideration at the February 13th, 2018 School Committee Meeting, Policy Number 404, Student Activity Account Interest Earnings as Presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Can, I just, thank you very much, this is much needed. On number two and number three, it lists an amount of $5,000 should be managed by the superintendent, or above $5,000 would go to the School Committee. Can we get some additional clarification on whether that $5,000 is per project? Meaning if it was for field trips, would it be for $5,000 for nature's classroom, $5,000 for, up to $5,000 for nature's classroom, $2,000 for Camp Bourndale or something like that, or is it per year?
Per transfer.
Excuse me?
Per transfer.
Right, the intent was per, per request, I guess.
We had, in our regular policy book, and I, somehow or other, I don't know where it went, but there was a point in time when our policy in general was that you were not able to move any more than $5,000 from one line item.
This isn't a transfer, this is the other one.
But to be consistent with that, we were trying to stay with that same...
And I understand that, but the question is, is it $5,000 per year? Once they hit $5,000, do we have to go back and start all over again? It's just very ambiguous. I would just like to have a little bit more knowledge as to where the $5,000, and there's two accounts, there's a high school account and a middle school account.
Right.
Is it $5,000 per each account? So, you know, and I'd be happy to, you know, share additional thoughts, but it's something I'd like to maybe, if we're going to vote on a policy that just kind of...
So this has been laid on the table, so maybe in the interim two weeks, we could coordinate between policy and the business administrator to come to a final consensus and some language for next meeting.
Great, thank you, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so all in favor of laying the motion on the table? Second time you got me. Thank you.
What would we do without you?
Okay, future dates and agenda items. So our next full, you know, regular meeting of the School Committee is February 13th, 2018. It's worth noting that per the timeline that we just adopted, some additional special meetings are going to be scheduled. So the first one's going to be February 6th. They obviously haven't posted that because I didn't know whether we were going to approve this until just a little while ago, but that's just worth noting that there will be other meetings posted in between. School Committee comments, Ms. Morgan?
I would just like to congratulate our winter sports teams on having some great records, but specifically to our gymnastics team, who have had a few recent victories for the first time in quite a while, so congrats to them.
Mr. Callenin?
I just wanted to offer our condolences to former member Kevin Biscadlo, whose mother passed away this week.
Thank you. Mr. Leoffe, second, thanks.
I'm also.
And I certainly offer my condolences to Kevin and his family, and also to Phyllis Hall and her family, who we also lost very recently. You know, agree or disagree with her, you always knew where Phyllis stood, and there's something to be said for that. So may she rest in peace. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.